That can get voted in and out. Just think about us out there. And do the right thing by us. And do the right thing by the people that have children. Some of them, water bill. How many water bills you think you're gonna cut off? When you raise this water bill? How many houses will be without water? Think about it. Take your time. And just remember. Darlington did not get in the sheepish skin in four months. Thanks for your time. Just remember that. And I'm not going anywhere. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Georgia.
Oh, you're welcome, cuz.
Oh, thank you for coming in. Okay, Lisa, you've got some comments, I believe? Okay, Lisa, you got other comments?
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
You can't hear me now? Okay, we are, we should be live on Facebook now. There was some issue previously, so I don't know how much of this is on Facebook from before this segment. But here are the comments from citizens that I've received thus far. The first one was an email in from Rosa Hudson, who lives in town. She says, "My comments are concerning the increases for the water and sewer rates of forty to fifty percent and sanitation twenty-eight percent. For the past two months, my recycle bin has not been picked up by the sanitation department. Will there be a credit for that? I was not informed that this would not be done. Also, the increase of fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents to my monthly bill is too much at one time. I haven't seen any improvement ever being made in my neighborhood with the projects you have listed on the letter for the use of this money in the past. I was told that the street I live on belongs to the state. I believe this increase is unfair, such a large jump in the bill. Also, the service I get is not all that great. What criteria was used to come up with this rate? I am not for this, and will we have a vote? Thank you, Rosa Hudson." The next comment comes from Patricia Williams. "I am writing to respond to the upcoming budget. My question is, how in the world you all expect senior citizens like myself and others to afford an increase on the water bills, sewer, and sanitation, increasing the way you all have outlined, when you are living on a fixed income? There are problems that have not been resolved from this other project that was supposed to be rectified by the city behind my house." She lives on Milling Street. "Mr. Garland knows what I'm referring to about the barrel in the ditch behind my house, which is still there. When it rains or a storm comes, the water back up in my yard. Yet I still pay city and county taxes." And now you all want to raise taxes again. This is a bitter pill to swallow when things are not being taken care of. When promises that it would be a hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents annually is a lot for someone like myself and others on a fixed income." She continued in a second email. "I forgot to mention this street over here, Tallulah Street. It has been patched two times already. It really needs to be fixed. It knocks cars out of alignment. It's just terrible. Also, that hemp plant, the old oil mill over here in a residential area, making people sick. We, as a community, were made aware of it and were not made aware of it until it was operating. There's a lot going on that is not right in Darlington, but you want to raise water and sewer sanitation rates. This side of town is always left out of the loop in everything. It's not right when I, we pay taxes just like everyone else. This really is a bad time, and with this pandemic going, it's hard on all of us now. People are dying every day. It seems like no one cares about people's lives. It's all about robbing from the poor and making the rich richer. These are thoughts and concerns. I have a lot more, but I think you know where I'm coming from, I hope. When people put old furniture beside the street, it won't get picked up. That's wrong, because some people don't have transportation to take it to the landfill. There is a lot of needs to look at in Darlington." And that was from Ms. Patricia Williams. Next citizen comment came from Ernestine Lied. She says, she writes, "I really think this is bad timing. We are now going through a pandemic, and you want to put it in place now. No one can attend the meeting, and the words being presented is very sad. A lot of the disabled and elderly citizens are not capable of sending emails. Most will not even read that enclosed paper with their book. The feedbacks are gonna be very low, and I'm sure you already know this. An increase of nine dollars and fifty-five cents plus six dollars, a total of fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents, for what? On the west side of Darlington, where the old Harpsville Oil Mill was, and has now been replaced by the CBD plant, in which the odor is about the same as before, no change for us. Take it, put it on the other side of town, and see how it feels to inhale that odor every day. Seniors were dying from, before COVID-19, and most of them are on oxygen tanks already." Just because we are not as fortunate to have high incomes doesn't mean we do not deserve to have a good quality of life to live out our later years. It is not like we have had a say-so on it. Just keep placing things over on the west side. Why not move it out in the county or somewhere it doesn't affect anyone? We are already on a fixed income now. You really want to increase the fifteen fifty-five a month besides the regular amount? If the water sewer usage doesn't increase for that month for that month to us, that'll, that's a lot. Then on top of that, stormwater fees to be discussed? Wow. The streets are bad, potholes everywhere. My street, which is Flynn Circle, keep patching it up with tar, and the holes are getting deeper and deeper, more problems. Look at the sides, the streets, grass is all grown up. I live at Flynn Circle, and every year I have to call to get my street which is dead, which is a dead end cleaned up. I pay taxes. Why do my, why do the side of my rock, yard streets have to look like no one cares, say it ain't so? I enjoy living in a decent environment. So what is the increase gonna do for the four neighborhoods? Make it equal for all, not just some. In God's eyes, we are all the same, no big you and little me. I've been living here since 2005, and I still don't understand the city and county streets, which has changed in the past two to three years. Nine-one-one was in the city, now it's now it's a county road, and some of the surrounding streets all changed to county roads. I pay city and county taxes. Please explain that to me. We all deserve to be treated with dignity." Ernestine Lied.
Christina, I thought it was Ernestine. You said Christine. I thought it was Ernestine, but it's Christine.
Ernestine.
Yeah.
Ernestine Lied. The next comment, email came in from Landon Hool. She says she wants to submit the following comments. "I'm writing today in reference to the proposed increases in water and sewer rates and sanitation fees, as well as the discussion of change in stormwater fees. Those increases amount to an additional a hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents on annual expenditures for families. I understand that infrastructure repairs are necessary, and that some of those needs are urgent. My concern, though, is the timing of this increase. Due to COVID-19, many families are suffering extreme financial hardships that will make an additional sixteen dollars a month an unbearable burden. Families might need that sixteen dollars for food, medicine, gas, or other bills." Excuse me. "I'm also concerned that these changes are being passed at a time when people are not able to access all the information or participate in a discussion. We can't attend city council meetings as we normally would, and many of our citizens do not have access to the technology that would allow them to participate in them even a minimal way. Again, while these increases may eventually be necessary, I believe that this is not the time to ask citizens of Darlington for these additional funds when people are suffering and less able or unable to communicate with each other and their elected representatives." Landon Hool. We have another email from Mr. Adam Hool. "The flat rate increase of forty, sixty, and twenty-eight percent across water, sewer, and sanitation would increase my family's bill by over twenty-five percent per month. And this does not include whatever rate increase is decided for stormwater. We are mindful about our water, careful to recycle what can be recycled, reuse what can be reused, and break down our trash as best we can to have as little impact on our community and its infrastructure as possible. Similarly, we are careful with our water usage in order to keep our bills low and to use wisely our resources. Increasing flat across the city does not allow for a more equitable distribution of costs. Those who use more place more strain on the system, and therefore should pay a higher fee. If I'm misunderstanding the issue here, please help me understand how this is fair to all citizens. Will business see their water, sewer, sanitation, and stormwater fees increase? And if so, at what percentage will their increase be? It seems that local businesses would also benefit from the, these plans for proactive progress. And I would like you to please comment on what those rates are currently, and what increases we can expect them to pay. It seems to be that businesses contribute far more to the breaking down of the water and sewer lines than residential customers. And lastly, I hope you will table this discussion council can meet with the public in attendance. These fees will be a true hardship to many in our community, and that they cannot be in the room as you make these decisions, that they cannot speak in person to their elected officials. Thank you for your time, Adam Hool." And the last one. Paul Wingate. This was dropped by City Hall in that, in that insert that everybody's mentioned so far in these comments. It gave instructions to either mail in, email, or drop them off, like you can drop off and pay your water bill at City Hall. So that's how we've been taking comments. All right, Mr. Wingate's letter. "I would like to share with you my concern regarding the proposal to increase water, to increase the sewer drainage rates. I am an eighty-three-year-old citizen, retired veteran of Darlington, South Carolina. I was born and raised in Darlington, South Carolina, and returned here after retiring from the military and federal service twenty-plus years ago. I lost my wife in 2019, which caused a change in my financial income. Any cre, any increase in my sewer sanitation bill would cause additional financial hardship on me at this time. Also, at my current residence, I have experienced an ongoing problem with the water pressure in the ditches located on the property. Most times, after heavy, constant rainstorms, the ditches flood and drain properly. This has been reported on prior occasions, but nothing has been done to correct the problem. During the warm and summer months, the standing water in the ditches has been a breeding ground for mosquitoes. It is so bad sometimes that I can't even walk across the street to retrieve my mail and newspaper without being bitten several times, which is hazardous to my health, as I have allergies and other health issues. In closing, I would like to thank you in advance for your review and consideration and your assistance with resolving the drainage problem." Mr. Paul Wingate." And he included pictures of the ditch. And this is on Gandy Street. And that is the last citizen comment that I received.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Somebody got a phone ring. All right, thank you. All right. We'll address all those, and we appreciate everybody sending their comments in. And we'll take all that into consideration as we talk tonight. Number seven, unfinished business, Public Hearing Ordinance 2020-03-Holt Brothers Barbecue Economic Development Incentives. Do we have any comments on that? Any questions? We've already put the, Lisa, the public hearing's already been posted for that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and it's been in the newspaper as it is required, and I have not received any comments by email or about the issue.
All right, so we need to vote on that, or motion for that? We have a motion to approve that?
We just have to have a motion to approve the actual second reading, not the public hearing.
Okay. All right, so everybody get with that. So then we go to Part B, which is the second reading of the ordinance 2020-03-Holt Brothers Barbecue Economic Development Incentives. We went over that last week.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, Kevin Etheridge or Josh Milling, if y'all could look at the the ordinance that we have, it says whereas, it's the first paragraph goes whereas, and then there's section five. "The development intends to hire as many as twenty-five full-time employees." With having the language as many as, does that give them a loophole to where if they don't fulfill the twenty-five employees, they still can be given the tax credit?
Brian, I'm trying to find it, buddy. I'm sorry.
In section one, the whereas, there's seven different sections. It's on the fifth one.
Okay.
"The development intends to hire as many as twenty-five full-time employees." My question is, the language as many as, if that gives them a loophole, the not hire twenty-five employees?
We can change the verbiage on it if you, if it would make you more comfortable on there.
I agree with, I agree with you, Brian, that that says, well, I only hired twenty-three. I hired as many as.
Yeah, so if we just take as many and as out, I think then it's locked in, the development.
You just wanna have, and just have twenty-five? Is that right, Brian?
Correct.
Say minimum, minimum of twenty-five?
Yeah, exactly. The development intends to hire twenty-five or minimum twenty-five full-time employees. However you want to say it, I just don't want to leave such an open loophole. The whole idea is.
All right, Lisa.
Mayor, in the actual program details in the ordinance that was passed in 2017, the minimum number to require is twenty, not twenty-five. He just, the developer said that they would be hiring as many as twenty-five. Told them twenty was what was required by the program to be applicable.
We could, we could put in at least twenty, if that's what the ordinance requires.
Yes, sir.
That satisfies me. I just want to make sure there's a minimum that they have to, a threshold they have to cover.
And it's twenty, not twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the second reading ordinance of 2020-03-Holt Brothers Barbecue Economic Development Incentives with the change of whereas on part five, the the development intends to hire a minimum of twenty full-time employees?
I'd like the motion that we approve the public hearing ordinance 2020-03-Holt Brothers Barbecue Economic Development Incentive Package with the aforementioned amendment.
I will second.
I'll second that.
Second, do we have all approved?
I approve.
Do we have any nays? All right, so no nays, all approved. So it has been approved for the second reading ordinance of 2020-03-Holt Brothers Barbecue Economic Development Incentives with the address the changes for a minimum of twenty-five full-time employees.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, and they're looking really good out there. They're driving by, they've done a lot of work also during this time, so it does look good out there. So stop by and look at it.
The building, like coming around.
Much, much better than it did when, it looked like that building needed to be tore down. I thought they'd done a miraculous job. All right, number seven, Part C, Greater Chamber, Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce Funding Request.
Okay. You know, it is not lost on the chamber board that this is an unprecedented time. There are many demands on our city's money. There are many, many things that need to be accomplished. However, money was budgeted to fund the annual Freedom Fest that takes place at the Darlington Raceway with fireworks and food and children's rides and so forth. At this point, we are not quite sure what that might look like. We have four options. The first being, it looks like every other year, full-fledged music, fireworks, vendors, et cetera. The number four would be only fireworks, people in cars. Since we don't know what it's going to look like, but we do have, plan to have an event, we do request that funding that's in the budget. Why would we request that at this time? People, our citizens will be anxious to get out and do something, even if it's in their cars or with masks on. And another piece of this is, our experience in this event is that the families, and they're families that attend, are families that really don't have enough extra resources to do other things around the Fourth of July. We, we see the, the struggle for a family to provide money for a ride for a kid. And, and we have accommodated in the past. So, so the point is, we want, we would like to request the funding. We think even in this unprecedented time, it's a good value for the city. And if you have any questions, I'll take your questions.
Do you have any questions from anybody?
I've, I've got a question, Mayor John Milling. I'm just wondering, Nancy, what if the event is canceled or it's scaled back? I know that part of your request has been based upon the funds that has been needed to support the type of program we had in the past. But will you need the full fifteen thousand if we're not going to do that? And I think our, our offer to the chamber may be contingent upon whether or not, in fact, with COVID going on, we're in, you're able to, to put on an event.
Absolutely understandable, because we have no idea at this point what is gonna be feasible. And, and I don't know, the reason we're asking now is because this is generally the time that we ask, and then we can plan the, the event. So, you know, we're certainly open to some negotiation on that and/or to some waiting to see what it looks like, as long as we know we would have funding. And we, we intend to have an event with fireworks if, if nothing else. And that, you're right, that would be way scaled back.
Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe also that part of this, in getting the, the sense of urgency as it is, is that we're giving deposits for some of these places, for some of the things that we're gonna get. We'll get the money back if the, if the event is a no-go, as I understood it from the director.
Yes, thank you.
So it's important that we keep that in mind, too, because as we all know, when we book things, sometimes they're sixty or ninety days out. And what's gonna happen is that at the last minute, if the, I think the suppression of these activities is lifted, everyone's gonna be, you know, kind of struggling and rushing to book these things. We want to be ahead of that curve in the event that that happens, but just keep in mind that we will get the refunded money back for our deposits if we can't go forward because of the stays, if they, if they remain in place. Is that correct, Nancy?
That is correct, and thank you for bringing that up, because if, you know, what we want is what, what was in the budget, the fifteen thousand. We can certainly negotiate down the road if none of this happens. But yes, in order to plan anything, there has to be some, some, something in the, in the coffers. So, for example, the fireworks themselves cost ten thousand dollars, I think, or, you know, give or take. And we have not done a deposit yet, because, but if we had this, these monies, we would go ahead and do that, and then we also, we know we have an agreement with the folks who run the fireworks to refund our deposit. And of course, that could go back if necessary. So thank you for pointing that out, Howard. Anything else?
Nancy, is the funding only from the city of Darlington, or do you have other funding sources?
We are, we generally rely on the county for a tax money, and we generally get it. The county has not had a meeting in the last few months, virtual or otherwise. And so we've submitted an application, we just don't know where it is. So no, it's not just the city. And of course, we have sponsors as well. It is not just the city. We, we're, but we're a little hamstrung with not knowing where the county is. Now, we're in contact, but without a meeting and a vote, there's no decision. But good question.
The city of Darlington sponsored this event each year that's been in existence for the last six years, so this would be, I believe, the seventh year they would have that.
So, Mr. Garland, is it that, I don't remember whether the fifteen thousand was actually in our budget, or they were just asking us for that yearly, and we were just donating? Was it a part of the budget? I don't remember it being a part of the budget.
It's something that councils voted each of the last six years to give out of the hospitality fund. It's not something that is, is budgeted, but the, the gifts that we gave last year to the Superted Festival and for the Cotton Mill Museum and for the Veterans Memorial weren't budgeted either. So it's just, it's just, just folks coming up and, or organizations coming and asking us for this funding.
Right. That's what I thought. That's what I, that's what I understood.
Okay. So it's already really budgeted? Before that goes.
I want to be very This is Brian, would like to speak for a second. I want to be very careful with the funding, with all the uncertainties of all our businesses and stuff. I mean, potentially, we could have a projection of a fifty percent drop in our revenues for the hospitality fund, which this funding will come out of. Um, so I don't know what we do here. As long as the contingencies are in there with relation to if it's being canceled, we'll still get our, our funds back, then I'd have no problem voting this through. But just want to be very careful on, on what we do in the coming twelve months, until we figure all this out and see what we look like on the other side.
And that's totally understandable, and certainly, we would agree.
Now, we've currently got eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars in the hospitality collections account, which was, the count list would come out of eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars in that account currently. And our hospitality collections for the month of March were down about fifteen hundred dollars over 2019. So while restaurants were completely closed for the month of March, we did have a dip of fifteen hundred dollars. We're expecting a bigger dip for the month of April, because this has been the month where most of the impact has been seen for all the restaurants.
And, and Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, but those funds are to go to certain events that attract tourism, right, or hospitality, right?
But can be used for recreation or tourism purposes specifically at, at the direction of council. It's just that the the state law is specific for tourism or recreation purposes, yes.
I gotcha. Okay. So it's not taking money from another project, basically, is, is what you're saying?
I'm just saying, the money is, the money is sitting there, and it's not purposely specifically for anything at this time. It's just a collections account that we have. We make a bond payment out of that each year of a hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, which is the one point nine million dollars which we borrowed back in 2017, which we currently have one point three million in the hospitality bond account, and that's different from the collections account.
Gotcha. Okay. So, offer, uh, offer, request on the table. Understanding flexibility and parameters that may be associated with it.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. All right. So everybody's clear, it, it is not budgeted money, but it is money that is, can be used in the hospitality toward, like you said, recreation, toward the ball fields, toward parks, or any tourism-type event. But also that, as Howard says, this is like year seven that we have supported, everybody, the city council supported it. So with the grants that if the event does not take place or is sized down, I would say, do we have a motion? Do you want to add anything else to that? I mean, if, do we have a motion to approve the funds for the Greater Chamber of Commerce Funding Request of the fifteen thousand dollars? As long as the event goes one hundred percent, if it's sized down, then it would be reduced and as a refund. Do we have a motion?
Oh, boy.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know whether this-
I don't know if we can say it that way or not, sir.
Whether this was considered or not, but is there a way to handle that up to fifteen thousand dollars and have drawdown against it rather than just turn over fifteen thousand dollars at once? And let there be some type of request that is made as these deposits are being made and other plans need to be funded? I just didn't know whether we could do it that way or whether we historically just turned the fifteen thousand over.
Howard?
We have, we have given the fifteen thousand dollars to the chamber unencumbered. But if you want to put the stickulations to it, it's however, however, you all want to draw it up.
Yeah, I think that's a good job, good way to do it, Mr. Milling.
John, say that again, Howard.
I would, was asking the question and perhaps proposing that we authorize up to fifteen thousand, but instead of spending the fifteen thousand all at once, that the chamber submit requests from this point forward as to receive some of the funding and show us what the fundings go towards. I don't know whether that's too much bookkeeping or not.
How about if they just gave us an invoice for something too? Would that work?
Yes. Okay. So instead of-
As long as we're doing this.
So instead of just say approve it fifteen thousand dollars, we would say approve that we will give them money based on the, say, invoice of the kinds of, of what they would need, something like that. Is that what we're saying? So they may not need fifteen-
Yeah, up to fifteen thousand.
Well, if they put both of their-
Say it again.
Agendas together with one with the full blast event and then the second one with the not full blast event, whereas everybody's in their cars, you should have an estimated cost of what each one of these things, these events should cost. And if they can submit something like that to us, then we can look at it and they can ask us, well, based on the full event, we need this amount at this time. If that's possible to do it that way. Or if they're proposing the not full event, then this is what we probably going to need. They should be able to ask either way of which one, of both of them, so we'll know which one, how much they would probably need.
Yeah, I think the way Mr. Milling is proposing it is that we basically give them the approval up to fifteen thousand dollars and they make a draw. And so Mrs. Bakasip, for example, if they come up and Nancy says, well, we're only going to be able to do the firework, we need to go and put a deposit on the fireworks, and it might be a thousand dollars that they put a deposit down, then she would only get a thousand dollars. And I would think that Nancy would go out and only put a deposit down on it to hold it. And so that way, we're not putting the whole ten thousand dollars out for the fireworks. And then if it comes down to the point, they say, well, we can't do the whole thing, then all they would only ask for was the rest of the money to do the fireworks.
Correct. And of course, the dilemma now, right now, is we, we just don't know.
You don't know. But again, that way, you just, what you want to basically have the money available. The money's available, they're given approval, and if it all goes full blast and it's there, if it's not, then you only spend what you need.
Correct, which we would do anyway, so.
But that way, we don't have to wait for you to get it back to us. So you're going to take it what you spent. And then she would know it's back as if they gave you a deposit back off the fireworks.
Yeah.
Can you live?
Mr. Seagulls? Mr. Milling?
I'm fine if Nancy can live with it that way.
Nancy can. I'm getting all kinds of texts, but I think we'll be fine. That's agreeable.
Well, I mean, that gives you the, as you spend it, all you got to do is come back and ask for it and just-
Exactly.
Just make sure that you're spending just deposits.
Okay. We can, we can certainly live with that.
Hey Brian, did you have a question?
I just want to make sure y'all are writing in the contracts, Nancy, just with the contingency of the canceling deposits back.
I'm sorry, there was some, yeah.
Just want to make sure you have in your contracts contingencies that if the governor was to cancel it or we couldn't have it, that you will be able to get your funding back.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, we started that in March. We had a pyrotechnics person that was on board that was not willing to do that. So we had to just abandon and find someone who was. So at this point, we don't have any other commitments that would be a deal breaker. So we have a few vendors who've applied and of course, if we go ahead, we anticipate lots of vendors applying because they're starved for business. But we just don't know. So, yes, we would not blindly go into an agreement without the, especially right now, without the ability to completely back out with no deposit lost.
All right. Do we have a motion for granting the fifteen thousand dollar allowance, I would say, with a funding request as they spend, they would turn in an invoice to Howard with the understanding that if the event is canceled, that it will be refunded back?
I would make such a motion, Mayor.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Mayor, this is Howard Nettles. I have to abstain because I have a conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you for confirming that. Thank you, Howard. All right. So we have it, and I'll say aye. All right. So we have it all in favor with Howard being excluded. All right. To grant the fifteen thousand dollar allowance with a request that the chamber turn in an invoice for funding each time as they spend the funds for the event with the understanding that if it's canceled, that the funds will be refunded back to the city.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. New business, stormwater fee proposal, okay? I guess I will start that because I'm the one that brought it up with Mr. Kinsall and Howard, that we have lots of issues. And as the, as we listen to the comments of people that spoke for the five minutes during the time, we understand your issues. We also understand that as you listen to what they said, we have lots of issues. There's lots of things in the city that need to be fixed. And the one thing that I would like to clarify is, I do not want to raise water fees. However, they have to be raised of some form and fashion because we are way behind. According to Mr. Kinsall, sixty percent is my understanding. We're asking to raise it nine fifty-five and then six dollars for sanitation. I agree with Mr. Milling that had stated the other day that we need to, and the citizens, that we need to state and show clearly to them that we are being appropriately spending their funding and money in the correct way. So they're not coming back to us and saying in another year or five years, you know, what'd you do with our money? I don't see anything being approved. Is to make sure that we budget that money and the prior money in our next meeting correctly, that we show the citizens that we will be responsible and diligent with their funds. Any other discussions on that?
Well, as, my concern about this is that I think it's not a good time to raise, to raise these fees. Um, I understand that the fees do need to be raised eventually, but I think the timing is bad. And I'm also concerned that if we wanted, we're interested, are we, as we're interested in raising the fees, I think before we ever do that, we need to take a clear look at that department and have an external audit done of that department and see why we're losing money. And to see where our money is being spent or is the city's money being wasted? Um, as of now, the only report we get from that department only shows us the revenue that comes in, but it doesn't show us the revenue that's being spent out. So we don't know where the money that goes into that department is being spent. Is it being wisely spent or is it not being wisely spent? So before we consider raising the taxes on the citizens, maybe we need to take a clear look, a deep, deep, clear look at that department and figure out what we need to do to improve their department before we raise taxes. Because I clearly believe that money's going in and out of that department is being wasted. And I think we need to have an external audit done to clearly see where this money is going.
Okay, thank you Sheila. And I agree with you a hundred percent that, and above that, I believe that we need to look at everything, all departments. That's why I have been stating, just like you just said, that every department, we need to look clearly and closely at what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What can we do better? I also agree with you that I think we need to, I know we need to raise the water bills. And I am, I would propose that we raise, that we go ahead and approve it to be raised as, say, August, to give everybody a chance to get through what we're going through right now. So, but any other discussions?
Mr. Mayor, we had, we had Alex Gany that was going to present some background on the stormwater fee proposal tonight. And just for the record, we collect a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars a year in stormwater fees, but our bond payment for stormwater is a hundred eighty thousand. So we're in the red severely in that, in that fund.
Yeah. I simply wanted to come in since so many of our, at least four of the citizens speaking were from Ward Two. And I know, as I've spoken to each one of, trying to make them, to explain the need that we have as the city for us to really, really move forward and prove that the services and the conditions. But it is a hardship for them, for it to be administered now. And that was, and you kind of faded out a little bit, Mayor. So I'm hoping what, what I heard you say, that we could delay it. I am all for the proposal as I have explained to each one of them that spoke today. And, but I encourage them to let their, let the citizen be heard. Come in and let them know what your conditions are. And that's what I want. I want a little bit more active participation from the folk in Ward Two, not complain and not let our council know what they're complaining about and to bring these questions to them. So I am, as I have tried to, in my little meetings with them, to explain the absolute need that we have. And this is the only way at this time that we see that would help us improve the City of Darlington as well as the services. So I am asking that if there is a way to delay it, to put it down, I don't know to it right, just not now. If this is, I don't know how that would work because I know the need. I know that the city need. But I would like our council to consider that.
So you hear what I said, I'll say it one more time, Elaine. Thank you. Was it, we approve it, but delay it till, with a raise to go up in August?
Oh, yeah, that, that's-
And again, if you listen to, I appreciate all the comments that they said. I agree with the comments. I understand the hardship also, all of us. Some people, as I told Mrs. Ross, most everybody is on a fixed income. Some people are a higher fixed income and some people are lower fixed income. We all have more money coming in, but if we got more money coming in, a lot of times we have more money going out. And so I understand when you're raising it, it can greatly affect people. But at the same time, if you listen to what they said of all the stuff that needs to be fixed, and that goes back also to what Sheila said, and I agree with both of you one hundred percent, is it is not just that we're going to raise it, but we need to go back and with a fine tooth comb, whether we do it or we hire somebody else to do it, we look at everything to see what are we doing correctly and what are we doing incorrectly and what is, what can we do better in every department? We've got to look at.
I'd like to say something as well. Um, one of the things I would like us to do, and this is more specific to Howard Garland, but once we get past this and move forward with some projects we're all on agreeance with, I think one of them's recreation, one of them's our stormwater issue, the bond that you mentioned, that's a hundred eighty thousand for twenty years, that we don't have enough funding coming into that reserve to pay for. And then the third one is our sewer issue that we have with our Diamond Hill and Scarlets. Those three issues, I would appreciate if you could make a letter on behalf of council to Robert Williams and to Senator Malloy and ask them about those three subjects and if there are any funds that they may be able to help us with. And then if we could do a similar letter to our Washington representatives and talk to our congressmen and our senators, the representative as well, asking about those three subjects. Because right now, we've got a huge funding issue. I understand what you're trying to do here, Mayor. I don't want to do it any more than anybody else. And that two hundred extra dollars means something to me as well. But we got to do it. And if we keep on postponing, it's only going to make the price tag go up and up. And I agree, if we're going to be implementing this in August, I think I'd be fine with that. So, thank y'all and thank you Elaine and Ms. Bakas for your comments as well.
Howard, I have one question for you, which was from the comments that somebody stated. The increase would be for the businesses also?
Yes, it would. It would be, the water sewer increase would be for the businesses and the stormwater fee, which we haven't really discussed yet, but also be a graduated scale for stormwater based on the amount of the previous services that a business has. So if a company, let's say, such as Georgia Pacific would be charged a much larger stormwater fee than someone that has a small business. And that's something we would have wanted to discuss tonight, but we haven't gotten into the stormwater fee proposal that we had prepared here.
Any other questions?
John Milling, I just have a question of Howard, and I don't know the answer, so I'm asking the question. How bad would it wreck your budget and your planning for the improvements that we need to take place? And obviously, from what we've been told before, we are lower on water and sewer and stormwater rates than surrounding communities. But how badly would it wreck things for us if we implemented the new rates January the first of 2021?
Of 2021, we'd have to go back and rework the budget. We would have to freeze, no raises for employees. We possibly have to look at layoffs specifically as it relates to our ability to work with the water sewer system moving forward. We have approximately four hundred forty thousand dollars in our capital reserve. But as you're going to find out in a moment, we have a project that's well over a million dollars just to repair a block or two of a sewer line on East Broad Street. So if we go to January, it severely hampers our ability to move forward as, as a government, as specifically as it relates to the water sewer fund, since it is enterprise fund. Something else that's hampering this now is we have probably a hundred seventy water sewer accounts, which we can't cut off yet because of non-payment. But when the governor lists his moratorium on non-payment, they would be scheduled to be cut off. And that may grow to a hundred ninety or two hundred as you get further along into a year. So that's going to be an issue also. It's not only fee increases for those folks whenever it's enacted or not enacted, but also those hundred fifty or two hundred who would haven't paid the water bill and would be scheduled to be cut off. So it's, it's going to meet somewhere in the middle where it's going to be untenable if we don't do something soon for our water sewer system. And I know we've talked about this privately before, but if we don't raise rates, then we need to sell the water sewer system. And I'll go on, I'll go on record as saying that. We have an infrastructure problem.
And if we, if we sell, excuse me for interrupting, we're, the citizens are back at the same point because whatever entity buys the system from the City of Darlington will raise the rates to a point where they can afford to operate the system and make the repairs. Am I correct?
Amen.
You're, you're correct, but either we, we do this ourselves or somebody else does it. We, we can't put a Band-Aid on this anymore. This is a fifty and sixty-year-old problem. The sewer line that's in the ground on East Broad Street's twenty-two foot deep and it's a hundred years old. So as, as Mayor Boyd is fond of saying, this isn't a Gloria Hines or Tony Watkins problem. It goes back to Ronnie Ward and Albert Cottrell and those before that who did not fix these issues when they had a chance. And it's just the way it is. We, this is just a situation that we're in. I know nobody likes it, but we, we are left to face these problems that no one else has been willing to look at. And citizens that are here now and the staff are- And citizens that are here now and, and the staff are having to make these, these tough decisions. And so that's where, Mr. Milling, I know you put the question out, it's just where we are. We might could do maybe two or three months, but six months would be very tough to do.
I have one more question, Howard. You had mentioned the 100 and whatever amount of water accounts you're going to be cutting off. Can we do a moratorium? I think there's a fee that we charge to reinstate those water lines. Is there any way we can waive that so that as long as they pay their previous amounts, that we'll set, we'll turn their water back on, but also, but making sure to waive the reconnection fee?
We have $33,000 in our balance account now for water sewer fund. We were down $20,000 in collections. I don't know what to tell you. If you want to do that, I'm sure it will help people, but it's going to hurt the water sewer department and.
What is that fee, 30?
It's $50. So we, we.
One more, that's a big, that's a big issue as well. So we need to look at that, and we truly are being favored that.
Well, I think we split the difference and just do, I mean, if it's a $50 reconnect fee, or you know, why not do it for 25? I mean, we're helping the, you know, the, the folks out with the water bill and we're not, you know, crippling the, the city either. There's a compromise that can be made.
We just gave away $15,000 for fireworks. You're talking about.
It's a different fund, though.
But you're talking $10,000, and I understand we're tight, but if you got your water cut off, you're probably tight too. And these, these are extenuating circumstances, so having a one-time waive the fee for one month, I don't understand. That's extra revenue we would be making. It's not like we're losing revenue. That's extra dollars on top of the pie.
A lot of the folks that are cut off won't come in and pay. They'll make an agreement, and I hate to be frank again, but they'll make an agreement and don't pay. And so a three-month-old water bill becomes a six-month-old water bill. And initially, we send it to the Municipal Association of South Carolina, MASC, and their debt send-off program. We, we sent $25,000 in uncollected water fees to Municipal Association in January. So we ran into this problem in 2005 and 2006 where we had more than $700,000 in uncollected water sewer fees because we were writing things off. So it's just my job to point these things out to you, and, and you can certainly do that, and we'll do that if you look and tell us to do that. But it's going to put us behind the eight ball and it will push for, it'll, it'll just put off people paying the water bill. If you give them somewhat, and some of these folks, they'll make an agreement and they'll say they'll pay it, they don't come in and pay it. And it's just the way it is. And I, Mr. Kinsall and I hear a lot of these stories and we're, we're empathetic to them. And we try to give them the benefit of the doubt, but if it's the same folks that have different excuses every month, I don't know what to do. It's, the water sewer fund is a, is a business, it's supposed to make money. And right now, we're putting so much money back into the ground to fix pipes that are 80, 100, 120 years old, that it's becoming, as again, I say, it's becoming untenable the way with the money we're bringing in right now. Our rates are 30 to 40% lower than Hartsfield, Timminsville, Florence, Lamar, and those are communities that are having some of the same situations that we are with our infrastructure. So if you imagine that we're 30 to 40% lower than Lamar and then Timminsville and then Hartsfield, and we need to work out something that's going to help the water system and help the citizens of Darlington, that's just, just where we are. We've, we've gotten more than $7 million worth of grants since I became city manager in 2010 to help our water sewer infrastructure. It all goes in the ground. Nobody sees it, but it's been mostly for low to moderate income areas. So a lot of the areas where we're having, going to have problems in the next 10 to 20 years are areas that aren't low to moderate income that the infrastructure is aging. It's that, it's that corridor along East Broad Street and West Broad Street where the line is 25 to, 20 to 25 foot in the ground, and nobody wants to really talk about it. But you know, the 2014 estimate from Davidson Brown was that we had $30 million worth of infrastructure that needed to be fixed, and that was six years ago. So you could probably add another five or 10 million dollars to that. And that's, that's $40 million in a town of 6,000 people. And that's just where we are. I'm, I'm not, I, I don't enjoy telling you that, but I am the messenger of this. And I think Mr. Kinsall would echo this, and some of the folks from Davidson Brown or anybody that we work with, Ms. Lathan, over the years understands the hole that we are in from an infrastructure standpoint, we need to fix these things, and they're not going to be fixed overnight. It's just the way it is.
So as I understand that the water bill, um, the water is disconnected. There's a $50 fee to turn the water back on, right? So is that a 15-day deadline or, or how does that work?
You have to pay at the same time.
Mr. Kinsall, I, I would feel better about him talking about that because he deals with the fees more on a, on a monthly basis than I do. I get, I get the appeal after it goes through him. Mr. Kinsall, are you, are you here?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. You all hear me? On the 15th of the second month passed due, the water is cut off. And before the water is cut back on, they pay a $50 reconnect fee.
And there's a timeline on that $50 reconnect fee?
It's, it's when you want your water to turn back on.
It's the same time, Sheila.
I understand that. I'm getting to a point. My point is, I'm getting, because I've had an experience with a couple of people who was given an extension or, or said they would pay it at this time or this particular date. And then they didn't have, or couldn't come in and pay it because they didn't have the money to pay it. And another $50 was added to it. So if they couldn't pay the first 50, how they going to pay it 100, 100? So is that the process, the way it works?
It works if they make, we, we will give them a once-a-year agreement. They pay half the bill, and they have a week to pay the other half. If they do, if they, they sign an agreement, agreeing to that date. And I tell them, don't sign anything you can't stick to. If you know you can't pay it, don't, don't write it on paper. And if they don't pay it by the date that they sign on that paper, it is recon, it's disconnected again. And yes, they have to pay to get it back on.
Yeah, so all I wanted to, to kind of clear, so you, right now, what I'm understanding that you count on the disconnect because you, you, you kind of count on the reconnect fee as income. You be looking forward, not forward to it, but you counted in that you expect this amount of things to be disconnected because it, and if disconnected, you're going to get the payment plus the $50, and that would, that boost. You be looking for that. Here's when, problem which I have said to, said to you, uh, Howard. When it comes to this, because I get, we get so many complaints and situation. Davidson Brown is right there with you. 30 years, they say. Where in that 10 years ago, 15 years ago, that did the recommendation that they are making to us now where we got to do something, these things wasn't made before? That is put on the backs of, 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 as you say, 20 years of neglect is put on the people now, and we got to do something now. That's why I have such a problem. And I understand when Sheila says we need to look at that whole thing because they're sitting back, people getting $1,000 worth of whatever. Where was the recommendations before? And why wasn't they acted upon? If they were, please, and I think somebody should be accountable.
I've been here 14 years. We bring it up every year in a budget meeting that rates need to be increased. We showed a capital plan, what needs to be done from Davidson Brown, millions of dollars. Council has sought upon theirself not to act on any of it in the 14 years I've been here. And that's the reason we in the hole we in.
And I will step up to the, I'll step up to the plate. Okay, let me take control real quick. I'll step up to the plate, and you can document this, that Curtis Boyd is the one that's bringing it up. It's got to be raised. We're getting ready to spend, Howard will spend just about every dime you got to try to fix one street. And we know, we all know, sitting on this council, that these is the ti, this is the time that these pipes and drains are all 70-plus years old. We can sit and blame everybody behind us, that's fine, but today, we're going to make a move forward. We have to make a move forward. I understand this, let me finish talking for just a second. The people know in this city, in every city, that one of your most important things besides food and medicine is that you've got to have water. So to me, I got me stepping out of a limb. Some people will take advantage of you. They may, they may not, but we have to draw a line. And I'm not there to listen to them. I listen to people all the time. I try to help people all the time. But somewhere the line has to be drawn. They know they have a water bill. They know it's going to be paid. They know there's going to be a $50 fee to cut it off and cut it back on. We don't, none of us want to have to do that. We don't want to pay that $50. Nobody in this council wants to make $50 for turning somebody's water off and on. But when you send a truck out there, you send a worker out there, it costs money. And even at $50, you probably haven't made a whole lot of money at all, send that worker out back to take the time to cut somebody's water off and on. So again, what we're proposing tonight is that, what I'm proposing tonight is that we go ahead and raise what we said, 955 and the $6. And I propose that we raise it as in August. We can't, we re, we needed to raise it a long time ago, but we need to raise it August at least is my proposal. And then I also would like to propose that there will be a percent of increase as we move forward in years to come, whether it be 1 or 2% that each year that it's automatically raised so that we don't shell-shock each person with a large increase. But we've got to get caught up because otherwise, we're just going to, we're going to be felt way, way to the side and have no money to fix anything.
Mayor, I think we enacted an ordinance maybe three or four years ago where we did impose incremental increases in our water and sewer bills. I'm not sure that stormwater was picked up, but evidently those incremental increases are not, have not been sufficient to take care of the problems. Am I correct on that, Howard Garland?
Howard, you're muted.
Howard, you're muted.
Yeah, we haven't raised the stormwater rates since 2016, but we've been raising the water sewer rates 3%, a year.
Right.
Right. Will 3% or, will the ordinance that raises it 3% a year for water and sewer, if we make the raises that the mayor is proposing, will that 3% be enough to keep us in line? Or do we need to come back and visit that as well?
I, I, sorry, is that for me?
Howard Garland.
Yeah, I, I believe that we not only do what's on the table, but we put in a adjustment that would be based on the CPI. I wouldn't just say, uh, set it at 3 or 5%, whatever the CPI would be for that year, I would, I would tie it to that like we do for mileage increases. That way, if the inflation rate goes up, we can adjust accordingly. If the inflation rate is low, then we would adjust accordingly. As far as the, again, I, I know this line item is, we're talking water sewer, but this is all coming down to the line item, line item with stormwater. So that, that's what we had on the agenda tonight was to talk about the stormwater fee. And let me again say that the stormwater fund collects $134,000 a year, and we have a bond payment of $180,000. So we are in the red severely on that fund. If any of the, if any of the funds need to be raised, it's the stormwater fee. And I, I'd like for Alex DeGany to talk a bit about the, the proposal that we have in place for you so you could hear and understand the, the math behind that, if that, if that's all right with y'all.
Alex? Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've come for you tonight to talk to you about the proposed stormwater rate increase that Sheila and I put together. Tried to do a lot of research on this thing so that we could try to be fair with it. We know there's going to be a lot of questions, concerns, because we're talking about going up onto other rates as well. So we want to make sure that we're fair across the board with it. Right now, I took over stormwater in August of last year, and I'd like to say that since I took over in August of last year, we've made a lot of headway on the stormwater system in the city. We've been able to do very little infrastructure work. We've had to make a few repairs. But there's a lot more stuff that needs to be done, just there's not, the money's not there to do it. Currently, when I took over, it's really, really wasn't a stormwater department. You had, when I took over, we had the VAC truck that we got a payment on, you got the stormwater bond, which covers the project that, that was done on the southwest, southeast, southwest Darlington side of town. Then we have two employees. I have one employee that comes out of street and sanitation that gets paid out of street and sanitation. And I have one employee that gets paid out of water and sewer. I told Howard that, or you know, Howard and I discussed it, and I told him that if we were going to have a department, we needed to make a department, make a budget for it. And I would like for everything in stormwater to be funded by stormwater instead of pulling money out of water and sewer, street and sanitation. Anytime we have a problem, we've always had to either pull out of a line item out of street and sanitation or a line item out of stormwater. We know stormwater is about drained now. They've got their own issues they need to deal with, or problems they need to deal with. So we don't need to be trying to pull money out of their budget next year to try to do stuff for stormwater. So he and I, we talked about it, and I told him again, I'd like to be able to fund the stormwater department out of its own budget. The only, the only way we can do that is by increasing the rates. Like he said, stormwater right now bringing in $134,000 a year and have a bond payment of 180,000 a year. So you can see that you're, what, $45,000, $46,000 into hold already. So currently, the residential rates are $4 a month. And commercial, no matter how big or how much impervious surface you have, you're paying $5 a month. So we, like I said, we did some research on it and looked at some neighboring communities, cities, counties to kind of find out how they've been doing things or how they're basing theirs. On commercial right now, we're bringing in about $21,600 a year, and we're bringing in 109,488 on residential roughly. But the way we're looking at it is to increase the commercial rates based on impervious surface with a minimum, with a minimum amount of $25. And then the residential rate would go to 650. So we're looking at increasing residential by $2.50 a month. The biggest, the biggest increase is going to be on commercial. What we're looking at is, and we're, we're trying to, we kind of followed the city of Florence. They were, there's, when you start doing a lot of looking for stormwater programs, there's not a lot of areas that really have what they call a stormwater program or actually have stormwater fees. So we had to kind of reach out and see, but Florence paid someone to come in and do a study and come up with a figure as to how they charged. And basically what they do and what we're trying to do is they charge on commercial accounts, they charge $3.50 for every one unit of impervious surface. One unit equals 2,500 square foot of impervious surface. So that's what we're looking at doing, which would be like Walmart and places like that. They would have a lot more impervious surface, so of course their rates would go up tremendously. But we want to base it on $3.50 for one unit of impervious surface with one unit being 2,500 square feet or a $2,500, $25 minimum fee. So some of your smaller businesses that don't have a lot of impervious surface, their flat rate's going to be $25 a month. Larger businesses are going, you know, increase significantly. Like I said, current commercial stormwater revenue is $1,800 a month. Would our proposed increase on the commercial side, it would increase our revenue to $16,234.75 a month. Residential right now, we're bringing in $9,124, and it would increase our residential revenue by $14,826.50 a month, which would be a total revenue of $31,61.25 and an annual revenue of $372,735. Howard has kind of put together a budget for the stormwater department, and we're going to be cutting it close by being able to fund that department with $372,735 a year. But it's a star. I'm a firm believer, and I've said it before, I don't believe in Robin Peter to pay Paul. You know, if we've got issues in stormwater, we need to be able to fund it out of stormwater. We have infrastructure problems. We spent last several weeks working on something over the rescue squad. It was a, it's a city storm drain. Fortunately, we, we finished that project up. We just have a little bit of asphalt work to do, and we'll be finishing the parking lot of that one. And, you know, I feel like doing it, we did it in-house with the, with the help of Davidson Brown, giving us the direction of pipe that we needed to use, sized pipes. We were able to, to tackle that project and finish it, and I felt like it was a success. And I feel like we probably saved the city a lot of money by doing it in-house. I've said it before, I'm a firm believer in doing stuff in-house that can be done in-house. And I'm a firm believer in saving the city money where we can save. But at the end of the day, we need to look at creating a department for stormwater and raising the fees so that we can have a budget and support the stormwater program for the city of Darlington. Do I got any questions?
Okay, let me, I'm just looking at the proposal that you have here. I mean, that, what what's in our package. So right now, $131 is collected annually. That is specific to stormwater.
$131,000, $134,000, yes ma'am, is collected annually for stormwater.
But okay, I, I got. And so with all of the things that you've listed here, with the rate increase, you would be able to have an annual budget of, of the 372,735.
Yes, ma'am. We would increase our revenue in the neighborhood of $372,000, give or take a little bit. All of it's going to be based on the accurate numbers for residential and accurate numbers for commercial and impervious surface. We still have a little bit of work to do to put all those numbers together, but that's a good budget number for us to work with.
Okay. I, you know, it's, in layman's terms, so why, even right now, why would the commercial accounts be so much less than the residential?
Well, because you look at it, you only have, let's see, roughly 300, I guess roughly 300 commercial accounts. And when you look at 300 commercial accounts or so, you're looking at, and, and I don't know the numbers right off the top of my head, which I could run it real quick. But when you look at your commercial account, let's see. When you look at your commercial accounts, you have a lot fewer commercial accounts, and they're only paying a dollar more than residential was paid. So, you know, the person that has a half acre lot, you know, here in the city's paying a dollar less than Walmart's paying, and they got a parking lot in a building full of impervious surface.
Which should have been, but that's a long time ago.
All right. This should have been addressed a long time ago. But I don't, I don't know, before I took over stormwater, I don't know that there was, like I said, there wasn't actually a stormwater department. It used to be up under street and sanitation. And when I took it over, we pulled it out from up under street and sanitation. So it was kind of funded by street and sanitation. And, you know, like I said, that should have been addressed a long time ago, but it wasn't. So now I'm trying to address it to make sure that we're doing what we need to do for the city of Darlington to be able to have the funds that we need to be able to do the projects that need to be done.
All right. Hallelujah.
All right. So let's get moving here. Do we have a proposal, a motion for the proposal of the stormwater fee to be raised for $9.55 and $6 for sanitation as of August 2021?
Mr. Mayor, you can't vote on any fee increases. You have to have an ordinance for that.
Okay.
So you can certainly get an understanding or have council members express their opinions, but you have to have a public hearing before any type of rate increase.
Okay. So then we, so just get everybody to agree on some, on going forward with the public hearing?
I agree we move forward.
I agree.
I agree if we move forward after we do a complete audit of that department, then I agree that we will move forward.
I think we've got to move forward before we have a complete audit because an audit could take two months, and we've got to address something sooner than that.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I agree.
Well, we're only talking, this rate coming into effect by August, right?
Well, we don't know until we get.
Talking about this rate coming into effect by August, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Then that's months down the road as well. It's just May. So I don't understand what the problem was with having an audit done. You couldn't initiate an audit immediately, just hire a firm to do an audit.
Sure, we could do both at the same time.
Unless you're trying not to have an audit to avoid something being known.
Oh.
I, I, I need to mention also, we still haven't had our, our budget workshops. And we haven't had first reading or second reading on our budget. And I think it's important, some of the comments that the citizens have made tonight too. Once we come out from under this quarantine, we can have public meetings and actually have the folks show up for a public hearing to make their comments. I mean, it's one thing to read them. It's another thing to look them in the face and them to look you in the face. I think that should be done. But we're, it's almost like we're not just having a council meeting, it's almost like a budget, budget workshop. And I think some of these things can be looked at in a budget workshop better than just a regular council meeting. And so I, I mean, I don't mind. All the discussion is great, but it's just, we, we have a time set aside later this month for budget hearings and, and meetings with department heads about these, about these same issues.
All right. Howard Nettles.
I mean, I, I think we should move forward. I mean, I, I agree we need to do an audit, but an audit is not something that's going to take place overnight. And if we want to work toward an August increased date, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we have a, we moved forward with what needs to be taking place, Howard, for public hearing?
We have to have a, we have to have a, the public hearing is usually held the night that you have your, your second reading for your budget. So what, what we would do in accordance with that is we'd have a second reading on the budget, and you'd have public hearings on your budget and your different increases for your different departments. And I would think that we need to do, regardless of when you do the, the fee increases, that you would have these hearings in June before the end of this budget year. So we are, so we would be following state law where we have to have a budget presented before the beginning of the next budget year, which is July 1st. So that we can't really have a, any public hearings tonight is something that we'd have to have, like the first reading at the June council meeting and a second reading later in June, which, which the second reading would be when we'd have the public hearings for the different increases.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, we have a motion to go ahead and prove, to move forward with that. So we'll do that in the, in the correct process. Okay. All right. Thank you. Line item B, East Broad Street Sewer Line Update. Howard and Davis Brown.
Yes, sir. As everyone knows, we had a sewer line collapse on East Broad Street between Vaughn and South Urban Streets. It's the area that's right in front of Scarlet Antiques and right near the turnoff to going to Garland's and veneer mill. So rather than me giving a, a, a long update on that, I'm going to hand it over to Freddie and the folks at Davidson Brown. We have some maps and some information for you tonight to look at. Freddie, y'all want to take it over? Everyone at Davidson Brown?
Yeah, Michael, you want to show your pictures and go ahead?
Sure can, I sure can. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is Michael Williamson, David Brown. I have Glenn Curvin, David Brown, and Ed Davis with me as well. So obviously, we, we all know of our large hole there on Broad Street.
And I'm going to share a screen with you here. Hopefully the, hopefully you can see a map right now. Everybody see a map?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. So obviously, we have pipe failure here. What we have done is we have gone to Fourth Street. There's a manhole here. We dropped a camera in, we have run towards, right towards Main and videoed that. We have dropped in here and videoed back towards the pipe failure. We've also been able to go to Urban Street. There's another manhole here. Dropped a camera in there and been able to, to access it with a camera and, and see the collapse that is there as well, that is not associated with this. We've also been able to go to Spain Street and drop a camera in there. And from Spain back towards Urban, we've got, we've got a lot of video. We've got some still pictures we'll show you. Shows the pipe in, in pretty, pretty bad shape. And then we also have video from Spain down towards the cemetery. We're not going to show you the video, not, but we do have a couple of still shots, but I just wanted to get you familiar with, with what we're talking about. So shortly, obviously, we, we had the hole here, and everybody can see that when, when you go by. What is very disturbing is on Urban Street, the influent and airflow pipe is blocked. And Alex came out there with his guys, and they tried to jet it out with the back truck. And it was just, it was, it was impenetrable. So it is stopped up, and that's why there's still bypass pumps running today. So we went in to Spain Street, come back towards Urban Street, and it's coming back up the hill. And within 60 feet, we came to another area that is nearly collapsed. And it was all that the camera could do to get up under the, the top of the pipe where it fell in. And then we went a little bit further, about another 240 feet, and we got to a complete collapse. So about halfway from Spain to Urban, halfway somewhere around Old Fox Road area, the pipe has collapsed again. Only difference is, is it just hasn't showed up to the surface. Now, this pipe is 22 feet deep where the pipe failure is at. That's what we dug down to. That's what they had to have two trench boxes stacked on each other, you know, to be able to, to even access that pipe. Guys, that's a very dangerous dig. So all the asphalt had come up. There is a fire, or gas main, rather, on Scarlet Side. On the opposite side is the water main. So you, you, you have a lot of confined area there that, that you've got to work in. These manholes are just as old as the pipe. The, the, the best drawing that we could find was from 1920. So that's 100 years at least, and these manholes are equally as old. So hopefully you can now see a picture. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this is what we call the inverted pipe. This is the bottom of the pipe. This pipe should be perfectly circular. You can see the crack down the top and how the pipe is kind of falling in and making a M shape. It's cracked along the sides, on both sides. And these three failure modes together allow that, that ground pressure to push down. And what else happens is once you get a surcharge, what we call surcharge, so that's when the water fills the pipe. And when the water fills the pipe, it's allowed to go back into these cracks. And it, and it actually surcharged, it actually pushes the water back up into the ground. And what happens is when the water level comes back down out of the pipe, then it pulls debris and dirt back with it. And that's what allows the pipe to cave in. That's what allows the hole to show up at the surface. Is that constant up and down of the water level pulling that dirt back down. On, on top of that, obviously, you, you have the creek there. It's a very low area. It's very deep there as well. You know, again, we're talking roughly 22 feet deep. The groundwater is, is pretty strong there. I believe they ran into groundwater at about 12 foot down from the surface. So that means that there's about 10 feet of, of earth that, that has, that is saturated with groundwater. So you've also got that way, the water pushing down on it, and then also the water's trying to find its way out. And this is its path of trying to find its way out. So after meeting with Freddie and Alex, and we're trying to, to get a best game plan together, there's, there's a couple of methods that could be done to, to rectify this. If it was not collapsed, we could do something called pipe bursting. But with the pipe collapsed, you cannot do pipe bursting because there's no way to get anything through the pipe. So for this area from Spain Street to Urban Street, you're going to have to dig it up. So I mean, the contractors got to come in, dig down at Spain Street, replace that manhole. Dig all that pipe up to Urban Street, replace that manhole. So that's two manholes that are, again, very deep. It can be replaced with PVC pipe. We can use something like an SDR 17 or something like that, just typical sewer pipe, and make sure that it is bedded correctly. You know, 100 years ago, this terracotta pipe, this clay pipe, it is, is, is phenomenal pipe. It's great pipe. But structurally, it's not very strong on its own. If you drop it in a crush, it's just like your terracotta pipe or pots at home that you plant, you know, flowers in them. Back then, they did not know, they needed to bed the pipe like we do today. You know, there's not a whole lot of terracotta pipe laid anymore because of that, because of the situation we have right here. But if it's bedded correctly, and what I mean by bedded is that it has a layer of stone that lays under it. So you have about six inches, eight inches of stone. The pipe was set on that, and then you encompass the pipe with stone or sand or something like that. And what it does, that allows all the force to be distributed around the pipe correctly and not have point loads like what this pipe is seeing. So for right now, what I'm looking at, what we've kind of pulled together is to rectify the problem you have at hand. Just the sink again, to, to get it back flowing, you'll have to go from Spain Street to Urban Street and past Urban Street to the actual collapse, which is another 80 feet of road. So it's somewhere around 720 linear feet. The budget that we've come up with is $1.25 million. Out of that $1.25 million, $225,000 is just in paving. Again, the entire road will have to be dug up. With it being that deep, I need to explain to you as well what drives some of this price. With it being that deep, there is nowhere to, to set your dirt. So when you start digging, you're going to have to haul your asphalt off because, you know, we can't store that anywhere. We'll have to carry it to the city site. Asphalt has come up, and then you're, you're, you're going to try to salvage as much dirt as you can because dirt is very expensive when you have to purchase it. Again, we ran into groundwater at somewhere around 10 to 12 feet. So let's just estimate that we, you know, halfway at 11 feet. So only half of the dirt we dig out can we salvage. That means the other half of the dirt has got to be purchased. And it's going to have to be what they call select field because it's got to be compacted, you know, in like six inch to 12 inch layers so that it can support the road. And then on top of that, you'll have somewhere around 12 inches to eight inches of stone, depending on what DOT your progress is on that road for that day. And sometimes it's hard to get an answer out of DOT on that. And then we have to put back the same amount of asphalt that's there. So you're talking about, I believe we were talking about pulling the asphalt completely out. The project goes, I believe, CDC, and maybe we can lean on them, getting them to help pay for it some. So now you're looking at about a million dollar budget, somewhere around $1,250,000 on the budget. And that works out to be, you know, roughly $1,800 to $1,900 per linear foot of pipe that has to be replaced. RIA grant, the RIA grant, we have already applied for, but the maximum amount that they will allow is 500,000. So we have applied for that full amount. We showed that, you know, the project was going to cost well over that and that the city would have to be able to support the remainder of the project. So that grant, we hope, will be available by the end of the month. That's what they're telling us. That's what they're telling us. It may take a little bit longer. Uh, I don't believe it'll be any shorter, just because of the situation we're in. In the meantime, we are finishing up the engineering on it because we have got to. The contractors, because it's got to be bid out, obviously. Uh, and it has to, to apply for the RIA grant. It has to be bid out for 30 days. And we are looking at having the engineering completed on May the 18th. So that we can advertise, but on Skiba. And get these, these plans out. Uh, you know, yes, it's an existing sewer system. But the contractor doesn't know what it is. So obviously we got a little engineering we got to do. We got to show him what the manholes are, size of the pipe. Uh, and then there's a, another little thing that, uh, that we've got to address. That drives the price of this project up is, is again, the depth. So your typical sewer line that's six feet in the deep, eight feet deep. Your service line that comes from your residential or your commercial buildings would generally tie straight into your sewer main. That is how this is done. But to do that, that would mean you would have to dig back down 22 feet at everywhere a service would go. So we kind of put our heads together. We come up with the idea of making a common header, what we call a common header, which would be a pipe. That would be nine, six, eight feet deep. That would capture all the services and dump into the manhole. That way, when the city ever needed to either add a service or repair a service. They don't have to dig down 22 feet. All they got to do is dig down to six feet or eight feet. Uh, and get to the service and they can make their repair. Beyond that, you know, this pipe, the, the crack that you saw inside wall, the crack that you saw on top. Those cracks propagate this pipe as far as we videoed. Again, this project budget that we're talking about here is just from Spain Street to Urban. From Irving all the way back to Maine. It's going to need to be repaired as well. But there is where you can utilize the pipe bursting method, which is where they pull a large pipe through the existing pipe. Uh, and that project, you know, I've worked on the budget for it. And it goes, it carries it from about $1,900 a linear foot to be replaced. Down to $1,300 in linear foot to be, you know, to be bursted. And that includes the common header idea as well. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of bypassing that's got to be done, that's already been done for this project now. Uh, but obviously the road closures and the detours. All that is, is very, very, very expensive. And on top of that, then you got, you know, once you bypass and then you got the diesel fuel you have to contend with and all that as well. Uh, the depth of it allows for a, a very large machine that has to do the digging. Again, you don't have a whole lot of room because you're only working in a right of way for the road. Uh, you only have so much room to put dirt. So that means that you've got to literally haul the dirt off as you dig it. And that just slows production down. Um, that's somewhere you got to haul that, that wet dirt. And, uh, those are trucks that you've got to, to pay for. So it just, it just compounds immensely. Um. Do, does anyone have any questions for us?
I do. I was listening intensely. Okay. Uh, you, you got me when you were saying about the 20, the 20 feet. And how dangerous that is. Okay. So are everything that you are doing here, here now, from what I'm hearing from the deep, from the detail. Is that you can't lift it up, but you're, you're going to institute somewhere along around Urban Street of, of, with the manholes. Where we will cut, let me see. Now this is how I got it. Connect the, the 20 feet deep pipes up to the six or eight feet thing. You're, you're trying to, is that part of this? That's what I'm hearing. So that in the future, we will not have to go down 20, 20 feet to correct any problem.
You will still, you will still have a pipe that's 22 feet deep. That is your sewer main. Okay. Common header, which is a separate pipe, the pipe that is 22 feet deep is about an 18 inch line. The line that I was talking about that we could put as a common header would only be like an 80 inch line. It's only an 80 inch pipe. And that would be much more shallow. That way that the city could go back and, and make their repairs. That line would go back to a manhole, wanted new manholes and tie into it. And then it would dump down into the pipe that's 22 feet deep.
I get kind of lost when y'all go to all of the details. I was just trying to get it pictured in my mind. As to, um, because when I saw the stormwater work being done on this side, this, these project. It wasn't no way near 20 something feet. Down, you know, it wasn't like that. So that's, I don't see how we're going to be able to connect it. But then that's not my problem. I'm, I mean, that's not for me to know. That's why you got the engineers. But I'd still wanted to know what it is because you, the way you made it sound is that it's so expensive. And that it is so expensive and dangerous and, and dangerous. So. And then I also, what I gather from what you were saying that in your repairing this, that you're making it less dangerous. Or for us in the future, that, uh, what you're doing is, is a way for us not to have to go through it like this.
That is correct.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just, you know, layman. But it's a lot of stuff. And it's expensive and for going forward, but you have already identified that going up the main street. We could have the same problem, but there is a cheaper and better way to do it.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Alright. So is all of this going to be mapped out when all this is said and done and when it's finished?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
Is all of this work going to be mapped out? For future references for 50 years down the road, instead of us not being able to know where no lines are, no piping is or anything?
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be a mapping of all of this?
Yes. Yeah. There will be a map for, any contractor can even bid on it. And then once, uh, the pipe is laid. Uh, and inspections are made, they'll do something called red light, red lines or either as built drawings. And that'll be produced. And then at the end of the project, you'll have a complete set of plans. And that is turned over to the city, uh, by a paper copy and digital copy.
Woo. Guys, we in for it.
Alright, thank you for everything, Mr. Glenn. That was very detailed. We appreciate it. We've got a mess, but I appreciate you taking care of it.
Thank you.
Alright, um. East Bronx, that's the, uh, South Carolina Department of Transportation, North Main Street Water Sewer Line Agreement.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's me. Uh, for a number of years now, we've been going back and forth with SEDOT concerning the water sewer line relocation. That's going to be associated with the North Main Street Bridge Project, which is right near Marathon Oil and Bristol Oil. Three or four years ago, uh, DOT wanted us to pay the relocation cost, which started out around $60,000 and then ballooned to close to $350,000. Um, we balked at paying those costs. Uh, we had the other utilities and other utility directors and city managers tell us some other towns that DOT was paying their utility cost in their communities. So when we presented, uh, SEDOT with this, they suggested that we, uh. Pay only part of it, a percentage. And so then we looked at that, we brought it to council in 2018. And, uh, lo and behold, before the end of that year, uh, the state legislature passed a law saying that SEDOT had to do all sewer. And water line relocations when they're working on projects in the right of way. So it's good news for us. And, uh, all you're doing tonight is voting to give the city manager the authority to execute an agreement for SEDOT. To replace water, our water and sewer lines in North Main Street as part of that bridge placement project. And that, once they start, it should take anywhere from 15 to 18 months for it to be completed. They could complete it in 69 months, but they want to keep the road open due to, uh, school. So that four lane road will be a two lane road for probably, uh, anywhere from 15 to 18 months, once the project starts. And again, all you're voting on tonight is just the, uh, giving the city manager the authority to execute an agreement with DOT. For them to pay for the relocation of the water and sewer lines.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Howard. Alright, do we have a motion to, uh, give the city manager the approval to, um. Have the SEDOT to pay for the water and sewer.
Almost.
On North Main Street.
Almost in that we approve the SEDOT North Main Street Water Line Agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, all in favor. Alright, thank you. Bye. That's been approved. Um, line D, city swimming pool summer schedule. Howard?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, we'd like to open the pool after the 4th of July. We are waiting on the guidelines from SEDHEC. As to how we, uh, social distance at a public, uh, swimming facility. And this will give us some time to, uh, not only get the pool in, uh, in ship shape for the summer. But also to enact any guidelines that we would receive, uh, from SEDHEC concerning, uh, use of a public swimming pool. Uh, so what we'd like to do is to get y'all's approval to open the pool, uh, July the 8th, 2020 this year. So, uh, once again, uh, everything goes well, we would open on that date, uh, per the governor's office approval in SEDHEC.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, do we have a, a motion to approve opening the pool on July the 8th? For the city swimming pool on schedule?
I'll pick a motion that we open the pool on July 8th. Within guidelines of all the, um, rules of the, of the state.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Hi.
Okay, good. Motion's been approved. For the city swimming pool summer scheduled to open up on July the 8th. Alright, uh, discussion of fines for bulky refuse removal, $100 after five days. Um, we talked about it the other day about whether to. Uh, include it in the actual work of the city or to add it as a fine. Uh, I brought it up to say that if they, uh, leave it out there. If we, if we allow people just to leave it out, then they could have it everywhere all over the town. And it's like even more of a mess for nuisance. So I was proposing as a discussion to move forward. Um, with offering it as a $100 fine that would play placed on their water bill if they leave stuff out after a five day warning.
So how is that going to affect, um, things that people leave on, uh, empty lots?
If it's left on the empty lot, we're going to have to pick it up. Um, so if it, that becomes a big issue, then we'll have to readdress that. But, um, if we leave it everywhere, this is going to be everywhere. The city needs to go ahead and remove it if it's only empty lot, but then we need to, we need to research and try to find out why and who had left it on the empty lot.
So we, I'm sorry, but there's no way that we can find the, the owner of the empty lot. I understand that it may be coming from somewhere else, but I should be able to be held responsible for my land. Um, so I still don't understand why we can't. There are legal reasoning?
I, I have no, I have no issue with that either, but. If it's my, if it's my lot, if it's my lot now, and I pull up on there in the property and see that it's all under, then, um. Well, I can't be responsible for making sure it's removed.
Yeah, I mean, call law enforcement if you keep on having an issue. Um, but be responsible for your own land.
Yeah, hold on one second. I think there's a bad storm. I gotta check something real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Large hail over parts for y'all, so be careful.
My, my house is getting hammered right now. I mean, it's beating in golf balls.
Yeah, look at this. Wow. Gosh. I got to get my dogs in.
Oh, it's hailing alright. We got a nest out there.
Oh, God.
Alright.
Yeah, that's hitting my.
Alright, um. So Howard, how, is Howard back here?
Gee, good.
Woo.
Howard, how would we, uh, had a public hearing on this or?
We're probably going to say, but.
Our hail is hitting everywhere.
We may want to wait till everybody's back here.
Yes, right.
You hear it?
Yeah. It's really coming down, hitting everything. I'm afraid I break windows.
I've never seen anything like this.
No.
Well, the roofing contractors will be happy.
Yeah, some of this hail is bigger than golf balls. I've gotten several pictures.
And my house as well.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we don't, we can't have, um, a vote on the, on the fine because it's just like a fee. You'd have to have a first reading and a second reading on that.
Okay. Alright, we can move forward with that on the next agenda. Alright, uh.
I'm sorry. I apologize. It's really that beating up on my little deck out there.
Oh, yeah. It, uh, on air from the ball field drawings and design, Lee Andrew.
Lee, Lee may have some issues.
I'm sorry, man. Yeah, I'm here. Sorry. It's, it's, it's bad at my house, right? But anyway.
It's bad here too. I know going through.
Um. What was the question? I'm sorry. I'm just a little flustered right this second.
Alright, give the, uh, your proposal for the ball field drawings and design.
What we, uh, what I'd like to do, i- i- instead of just saying, here, go do this. Um, and, and this person not get the bid when we put it out for bid. What I'd like to do is pay the architect that did the first drawings to give us a concept. So we, when we put it out for bid, when we do the RFP, uh, that everybody has a guideline or, or. Not necessarily what they have to stick to, but a concept of what we want in the park, how we want it. They can, they can redesign it if they want to, but we'll have something tangible that we can show people, this is what we're looking at for. Um, and instead of just saying, alright, we want you to draw it and then hit firm or whatever, his people don't get the bid. He's done all that work. So we're looking at paying somebody to do us a concept before we put it out for proposal.
Oh, gosh. Excuse me again.
Okay. We have everybody back?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Alright, uh, so do we have a motion to allow Lee to go in and get the drawings sorted?
Elaine is not, Elaine is not in her seat.
Elaine?
You stepped away for a minute.
Okay, thank you, Sheila.
Well, while we're waiting on her, I've never seen hail that big. That's incredible.
Hailing, good Lord. Oh.
Hey, you're just in time.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, where are we? I'm sorry. I apologize, um.
Okay. Alright, we were making a, uh, motion, Elaine.
Uh huh.
For Howard, I mean, for, excuse me, for Lee Andrews to be able to go ahead and pursue, uh, the ball field drawings and design.
Oh, okay. Do we need a, do we need the motion? It's already been made. We need a second.
We don't have a motion yet.
A motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll sec.
Hey, Brian Secison.
That's fine.
Alright, everybody in favor?
Uh.
Alright, all in favor, Ryan? Thank you, Lee. Thank you, everyone. Alright, uh, we have a first reading ordinance twenty twenty oh four dash one oh six, Blue Street zoning change. GC to R ten. Lisa?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, there is a piece of property at one oh six Blue Street. Used to be Morella's Dress Shop, if you're familiar, coming off North Main, past the um, Strickland's ABC. You take that right, ball fields are on your left, Morella's shop is on your right. Um, Mr. Sammy Evans has bought the property next to it and has bought the Morella's Dress Shop property. And he is putting some townhouses on the first property and wants to continue that development. To do so, he will need to change the zoning from commercial to residential. Um, the planning commission met via Zoom in, on, on April twenty-first and they approved. That recommendation to change the zoning from general commercial to residential. Low density residential. The only comments we got from the neighbors during the planning commission was the lady who lives on the corner. And she just wants to make sure that it remains residential. She does not want to see it be commercial. So she was in favor of it as well.
Well, we've discussed this before. Is there any, I'm just, for time's sake, I like.
Yes, she previously approved Mr. Evans' prop, previous property change.
I'd like to make it that we approved the first reading ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four dash one oh. Six Blue Street zoning change from GC to R ten.
I would like to second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Very good, aye. Alright, I'd like to thank Mr. Evans also for, for investing in the city of Darlington.
Amen.
Doing a wonderful job. If you've not gone by and looked at it, it looks wonderful over there. Alright, um, H is uh, boards, commission appointments. Lisa?
Yes, Mayor, um. The, our fiscal year ends June thirtieth and as such, we do, um, that's when our turnover happens. Um, we do have one seat on the planning commission. Somebody is uh, Ms. Paige. Her term is set to expire on June thirtieth and she would like to serve another term. She's been very engaged and involved and staff would appreciate her continuation on the commission. So we ask that um, you reappoint Ms. Paige to the planning commission.
Do we have a motion to reappoint Ms. Paige to the planning commission?
I will make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright, so it's passed. Mrs. Paige will be reappointed to the planning commission.
Alright, and there is one other open seat on the planning commission and we have received. Um, two applications uh, for service. Um, and those were included in your packet.
Uh, Lisa, I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Michael Wiggins. I know that he's applied to be on that, on that um, commission.
I'll be happy to second Michael Wiggins.
I would like to nominate Ms. Heinz since she's our prime mayor and applied to be on that commi, on that board as well.
That's fine. I think that goes through one voter at a time and Mr. Wiggins was nominated first.
Okay, now we have a first motion, a second motion from Mr. Wiggins. Do we have uh, any ayes?
Aye.
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 Okay, nays?
Nay.
Elaine, did I hear your, Elaine?
Oh, I said aye. I just, you know, just a good spot, so. Is that, okay.
Is who?
I mean, am I?
We were voting, they were voting for Mike Wiggins.
Right, I'm just saying, she had to, she just indicated she had two other slots. And that Wiggins was first and Heinz was a, another one.
I think she only had one slot, right?
There was only one seat available.
Only one slot.
Then I'm in, I'm, I'm, okay. Okay, uh, mine is gonna be a nay because I got the, I'm, I'm, I given um. The mayor, or mayor Heinz, former mayor Heinz, my support.
John, John Millen was aye?
I was an aye.
John Seagars?
Aye.
Howard Garland, Howard Nellen, Nettles?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Okay, so we have four ayes. So Mike Wiggins would be positioned, is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, thank you.
Alright.
And that is the only um, application that we have.
So I would like to see on some of those committees, some African Americans who apply for some of these seats on some of these committees. Instead of a minority, uh, uh, instead of a, a majority of Caucasians on all of these committees.
See, we thought, I, I thought the planning committee was um, very, anyway, we are dealing with it. The time is, yeah, yeah, we are dealing with it.
Um, to Ms. Backus' um.
And I got so much to say.
Alright, Lisa?
Um, to Ms. Backus' point, um, our application to serve on the city boards does not include um, race in any way. It is not on the form, so we would not know who, what color anybody is based on the form that we receive. And there are very many seats still available. There are two on the historic landmark commission. One on the beautification board, one on the board of zoning appeals and two seats on the design review board. So there are plenty of seats still available.
And Mayor Heinz applied for that seat the night that you mentioned that, that seat was open. The night that, that you mentioned that she was over, Mayor Heinz applied for that seat and came to you and told you she was applying for that seat.
Yes, ma'am. And you received it in your packet.
And I said what I said and I meant what I said.
Okay.
There's enough racism in this city as it is.
Let's uh, let's drop the racism. Thank you.
Well, stop being racist.
Alright, Mrs. Backus, thank you. I'm not being racist. Mrs. Backus, please mute Mrs. Backus. Thank you.
I can unmute myself.
Yeah, that's fine. Receive uh, information from any department heads. Is there any questions on the information from department heads?
My only question is, or my only statement would be, um, the capital plans that you have Freddie and Mr. Alex. If y'all could just get us some actual printed information of what y'all want to do over the next years. So that we can disseminate that out to the community and let them know what we're gonna be spending, um, increases that we're talking about.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll be more than happy to get that information to you in the next couple of days.
Thank you, Alex.
Most, most of mine.
Alright, thank you.
Um. This is kind of going back to the, going to the, the citizens' request. And, and I'm not gonna take up most time, but there, one of the gentleman that referred to that drainage over there is um. Um, Freddie, did you all, I don't know whether that's you or Alex now, that would be. It's Alex, you said?
Yes, so ditch would be Alex.
Okay, to see about it, to at least respond to that because this isn't the first time he said something about that. I don't know what to do. And I truly want us to see what in the world we can do with Miss Patricia Williams. She keeps talking about a barrel in the ditch back here.
Alright, Elaine, Elaine. Elaine, if you will text me the address of where that barrel is, PD Junk just texted me earlier and, and asked about it. They will be glad to remove it if it's something that they can remove. So if you'll get with me on that, then I'll make sure that's taken care of.
I just would like to dwell on that situation and the ditch, Alex, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's first I've heard about it. So if y'all can get me the address, whoever has it, I'll be more than happy to check on it.
Okay, very good, very.
Okay, we have any council comments additional? Okay, and we have a reminder that Tuesday, June the second, twenty twenty at six thirty, we'll have a monthly meeting again for city council. Um, and do I have a motion to adjourn tonight?
We adjourn.
A second. Alright, all in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Alright, everybody be careful. I'm gonna go check your cars.
Have a good night.
You have that information about the barrel, Elaine. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank y'all.